I think I will just start by, I was obviously, I was listening in on the discussion, particularly around emergency care and decisions around emergency rooms versus urgent care clinics. Can you just, could I just pause for one second?
I recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
Thank you. And so I was curious too about what data is kept about those decisions? So as they're being made, so there's, you know, an ambulance called or the RN is on the phone trying to triage what treatment, how are, what data is kept about what decision is made? And then how is the success of that decision reviewed? So do you at the department have a chance to, you know, every month, look at what happened with emergency room treatment in Nova Scotia this month? Who went where? What happened? And are there benchmarks? Or how do you measure a successful month, for instance, in emergency care in Nova Scotia versus what changes might need to be made?
Recognize the Minister for Health and Wellness.
Yeah. So that's like the hugest question ever, but I'm going to try and, and make it, you know, kind of concise. So in terms of EHS, certainly the work of the medical director, Dr. Andrew Travis, and the team around the physicians as an example, there are some numbers that we get. So response times as an example, it is one measurement, but if you look at clinical data sets, it actually probably is not the best or only. We should actually be looking at clinical outcomes, which we are doing, but we're becoming more and more robust in terms of that. So as an example, you know, if somebody calls EHS, not a, not an absolute emergency, but absolutely needing help, a response time may not be the appropriate way to measure that risk, that call if they're connected with the medical comms nurse and they are then transferred to, you know, a queue, a waiting time where the spear unit comes out and supports them in accessing primary care as an example. So looking at really the data set that tells us what clinical outcomes are. So response times are one measurement, but very static. It's a very finite number. So we really are trying to, trying to match clinical outcomes. In terms of the, the question around urgent treatment centers, is that, was that part of the question as well? The clinical, we would be looking at utilization in urgent treatment centers. We would be looking at the, you know, making sure that the right folks are coming. So all of the different, you know, all of the different innovations that we have, we do look at utilization. We do look at, at outcomes. We do look at demand as best we can manage it. So there is a very robust data review that happens on a monthly basis. And then if there is a sentinel event in any way, or an unexpected outcome, then those automatically go into a different review as well. So very much data informed. We're definitely maturing and looking at what we have done historically and how we can really attach the care and the, the analysis to clinical outcomes as opposed to just singular numbers.
Recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
Thank you very much. And I think that's really important. So I, I would, you know, not be a clinician, but having done a lot of evaluations, I would say that response time would not always be a great indicator of the effectiveness. Can you share with us some of the clinical outcomes that you might be measuring? Like what, what, what would a typical data set look like? And, and then what happens? Like, so there's a month and, you know, the patient outcomes that, that you're, that, you know, you as the department and EHS is suspecting and working towards are not met. What's the next step after that?
I recognize the Honorable Minister for Health and Wellness.
So I will get you a couple of examples of some of the clinical outcomes. I have an idea, but I don't want, I'd rather hear it directly from them. So, so Department Health and Wellness acts as the regulator and EMCI is the operator. And, and so our medical comms, our medical director would actually kind of look at the clinical pieces of it and make sure there's pathways. So we do work in concert together. And so that work is, is ongoing. So the other piece too is that there are, and I don't have them in front of me, but there would be protocols and standardized approaches to certain events. So there would be quality and thresholds. And when those thresholds are not met, they would look at that and have quality initiatives similar in Nova Scotia Health, which is what I'm more familiar with, which would be the accreditation process. So you look at what the, what the benchmark is, where you're above it or below it, and then what are the issues and how far below, right? Red, yellow, green. So, so though they would have a quality program, and I'll get a couple of examples of indicators, but there would be an established quality program that would work around the clinical outcomes for, for health services.
I recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
Thank you. I'm going to switch gears. So last night I had a chance to discuss estimates with the Minister of Agriculture. And one of my questions, he suggested that I bring it to you. So, so, you know, I think, you know, what we hear about in so many sectors and so many industries in every part of this province is a labor shortage. So, you know, and obviously in agriculture, that labor shortage is largely filled through temporary foreign workers on specific agricultural streams. I'm wondering if the department is supportive of, and a few ministers are supportive of extending MSI to temporary foreign workers who are here in one of the two agricultural streams. Oh, you're preparing.
I recognize the Honorable Minister for Health and Wellness.
So thank the member for the question. So my understanding is that it is practice that the, the foreign workers that come need to be insured by their employer in order to, you know, to come. And they would have a 12-month work permit. So I think that work permit is dependent on that insurance. We know that there are times that, you know, special circumstances arise and we have been able to work with people to support that. But the, the current process is that they are insured by their employer if they have a 12-month work permit. Oh, they get first day coverage if they have a 12-month work permit.
I recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
And so I think the challenge, Minister for Temporary Foreign Workers who come in one of the two agricultural streams is that they're not here for 12 months. So they're usually here for five or eight months. And so they don't, they don't hit that threshold. Yet in many cases, they've been back for 20 or 25 years. I mean, this is someone who comes regularly back to be part of our workforce. And, and I mean, we also feel it's a matter of rights. It's a priority for the folks, the producers that I talk to, that, that they're, you know, that they have their workers well supported by this province while they're here. And I also think, you know, it causes some consternation amongst workers in terms of making sure they understand what, what private insurance they have and if it's adequate. So, so because agricultural workers will never meet, not likely to meet the 12-month threshold, that's why this would be a special request. So I'm wondering if the department is considering expanding that for folks coming in the agriculture streams.
Recognize the Honorable Minister for Health and Wellness.
So because there is a requirement that the employer have private insurance for, for folks, we are not pursuing that at this time.
Recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
So I wanted to go back to some questions around gender-affirming care. And I believe that my colleague from Derby North might have posed some questions, but I'm just wanting to, to catch up and make sure that I have all the details. So, so we were talking about previously about the current services covered by MSI for gender-affirming care, what additional services will need to be covered by MSI for gender-affirming care in order to be WPATH compliant. I understand that policy work is ongoing in the department. But I'm wondering, you know, obviously, unique situations arise and, and people can appeal decisions. In 2021, 2022, or to date in 2023, has anyone received support for gender-affirming services, had them approved, that are currently not officially covered by MSI? Such as like a vocal, a female vocalization surgery?
Recognize the Minister for Health and Wellness.
So if there, so if there were individuals who received uninsured services, the numbers would be very, very small. And as a result, would make those folks potentially identifiable. So the numbers would be small enough that I would not be able to speak about them on, on the floor. Because I think if there were people that, that receives those surgeries, it would be identifiable in some places. So for privacy reasons, but there have been some people who have received uninsured services under special circumstances.
I recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
And certainly I recognize the need for confidentiality and privacy. And I'm wondering how that's insured. So did the department sign an NDA with folks who got uninsured, normally uninsured services provided?
I recognize the Minister for Health and Wellness.
So again, I would say across, you know, the things that we fund at the Department Health that are not insured, we would not necessarily have an NDA depending on the, the person and the circumstances and the individual circumstances. It really is specific and it certainly would only be around the treatment that they received and it would not be in relation to anything else.
I recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
And I appreciate that clarification. So I guess, but my question is, has there been an NDA signed with someone who has received gender-affirming care, not normally insured by MSI, to cover that specific uninsured service provision?
Recognize the Minister for Health and Wellness.
So again, the number of individuals would be so small that it would be identifiable. And so I'm not really in this forum going to speak about that.
Recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
Have NDAs been used for the provision of uninsured services in other circumstances? So not to do with gender-affirming care, but, you know, a service normally not covered by MSI that someone requests, appealed, is approved for, is paid for by the province? Do they typically sign an NDA about the receipt of those services?
I recognize the Honorable Minister for Health and Wellness.
So what I would say at a high level is that there are sometimes that there is a settlement around services, uninsured services, and that may include an NDA, but there are other times that it does not. So it really is case-specific, very much case-specific. So it's very hard for me to just apply a general rule to that. So that's what I would say about that. It's certainly if there has been a settlement, sometimes there is a, a settlement agreement, but not, it's not routine practice.
I recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
And I guess I'm wondering, and I hope this is an okay form to ask this question, but I mean, the answer is yes. Sometimes NDAs are signed when people receive uninsured services and there's this, there's approval and a settlement. And I guess I'm wondering, why are they used? Why are they signed in some cases and not in others?
I recognize the Honorable Minister for Health and Wellness.
So I would, I guess what I would say to that is it really does depend on the settlement agreement. It would depend on the circumstance and the settlement agreement around that. So there's not a, a tick list, you know, it would be a negotiated settlement. It would be part of the negotiations. And I can't really tell you what those, you know, that there's not like a laundry list of things that we choose. I think it is very, very person and case-specific, which is why it's very hard for me to give you, you know, a generalized answer about that.
I recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
And so I guess, you know, recognizing that, and of course, seeking healthcare and, you know, seeking solutions for health challenges are, you know, very unique, as unique as each of us are. But how does the department then monitor when it's appropriate to use an NDA or not? So how, who, who keeps track of that? Who, who thinks in this case this made sense? In this case, we shouldn't have done it? In this case, we should have done it? How is that monitored?
Recognize the Honorable Minister for Health and Wellness.
So again, it would really depend on the circumstance and the parties that were involved in the negotiation of the settlement, right? So, and I can't even presuppose who that could be because again, that fluctuates as well.
I recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
But I guess I'm wondering, still for you, Minister, when we're in a context where we're talking about the appropriate use of NDAs and the inappropriate use of NDAs, and they, you know, were developed for a very specific purpose. I can see where, you know, there may be, they may be requested as part of service with, through MSI and through, however, through MSI. But I'm wondering, how do you satisfy yourself, Minister, that the department is using NDAs appropriately?
I recognize the Honorable Minister for Health and Wellness.
So this would be around a settlement for services received. There's, it's certainly in no way, you know, in terms of silencing anyone that's been victimized. So it's not in regards to that at all. And so we have legal counsel. The individual would have legal counsel. There may be other bodies involved that are advocating for the individual. And so it's worked out together. It's never, you know, just the department and the person. And it's certainly not used in a way that anyone who's been victimized is silenced. It's around a particular parameter where an uninsured service is, is delivered. And it would be very particular to that. So it, it's not used in any way to, to silence somebody who's been harmed or victimized. So it would be specific to the treatment that was received. And it would be worked out with legal counsel, the individual's legal counsel, and any advocates that the legal, that the individual is working with.
Recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
Thank you. And I, you know, I just, I think, you know, they're still in that context of advocating for yourself or perhaps having legal counsel or having an organization involved for medical treatment, particularly, you know, feeling a sort of mal duress, or, you know, is actually a very vulnerable activity, I would think. Well, you know, certainly when, you know, what I've had to go forward and advocate for services that were not being readily provided to my family, it, it is, it is a very vulnerable place to be. And so I guess I would say that, you know, monitoring how they're used. So not used for, like not used with the intent for silencing, but just monitoring their use is really important. Because I think when people are advocating to have access to healthcare that's not being provided by the province, inherently, the province has more power. So, so there's sort of an inherent, you know, power differential right there in that negotiation. So I, I do think that, you know, making sure that they're being used the right way in the right circumstances would be appropriate. But I am happy to hear that some gender-affirming care has been approved that is not currently officially covered by MSI. And I am happy to know that, that Minister, that the department was able to assess the need for care for, for those people and recognize that it, you know, is a central part of the healthcare they needed, that they couldn't find it here, and that it needed to be done and would be supported by the province of Nova Scotia. I mean, that's, that's exceptionally good news. But I guess I'm wondering, what about the, what about the rest of folks who don't have, don't feel they are in a position to appeal what is currently covered by MSI? I mean, this is the whole point of this province becoming WPATH compliant, is so that all of the medically necessary gender-affirming care services that have been recognized by an international body of health professionals and specialists are actually available to Nova Scotians. I think there's lots of Nova Scotians who want access to the types of services that are not currently covered. And, you know, it, it, the power is in the hands of the province. So this idea of like standing up and appealing and fighting for that is tiring. Lots of people don't have that kind of resources to be able to do that. So, you know, I think, I guess I'd invite you to comment that you've recognized in the department, the department has recognized that, that these are essential medical services for a few folks, and yet you're still holding the line and not approving them for others. And I think that's unfair. So I'm wondering if you could comment on this process.
I recognize the Minister for Health and Wellness.
So I would say that as a province, we are most certainly on a journey. We have worked at the, recently on developing a more holistic policy and looking at, you know, ways in which we can reduce barriers. Because we heard from community, there are a number of barriers to the insured services. I would say we were on a journey and we will continue on that journey, working with individuals from the community. And, and, you know, that's, that's where we are today. We feel we've made some advancements. There's always going to be more to do. And we're committed to continuing that dialogue.
Recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
And I mean, I, I appreciate the reference to being on a journey, but I think that's where, when we have international bodies like WPATH in certain areas, that they do the work and they do the engagement and they develop the standards. So that as a province, we don't have to go around and develop standards for the care of, of a lot of medical issues and medical conditions. We don't have to go and decide what is the, you know, what is the current best practice for dealing with a broken ankle? What is the current best practice for a certain kind of cancer? And so WPATH exists so that, you know, I mean, you know, respectfully, we don't have all the expertise in this province to, I don't think. We don't have anybody working from a viewpoint, from a, like responsible for considering to us LGBTQ plus issues in the Department of Health and Wellness. There's no specialist. And so you don't have the expertise in the department, but you have a whole international body that's developed standards. And, you know, and so, so sure you're on a journey, but I will tell you that people who wait, like, you know, a long time, decades really, to access the care they need, so that they feel themselves that their gender dysphoria is addressed and resolved, that's, that's a journey that we shouldn't be forcing Nova Scotians to take. And so, you know, I think the community really got excited last year. I think people really got excited and we thought that this province was going to become WPATH compliant. And now we're a year later and all I hear is about is a journey. And I will tell you that when I asked you questions before and I went back and you said, oh, there've been all these engagements and the draft and this and that, I don't know who you're engaging. And I've asked you before table those engagements and the dates, because the folks that I would think of that you would be engaging have reported no contact for several months. So I would love to, I'd love to know, like, what's the last, most, what's the most recent engagement with, I'm sure you can tell me, I have a, you know, an NGO here in Nova Scotia doing that type of work. What's the last date of engagement that's happened? Because I'm certainly not hearing anything from community of being engaged.
I recognize the Honorable Minister for Health and Wellness.
So thank you to the member for the question. So the draft policy has been broadly discussed. There was a representative from Cape Breton Transgender Network and the Executive Director of Sexual Health Nova Scotia, Director of Pride Health, Clinical Member of Sexual Health, also attended a meeting in December. And this meeting was positive. So there's been other discussions that have been happening between Department Health and Wellness staff as well as Tanya Penny, who's been leading the work, and Dr. Sam Hickox. So these discussions, by all accounts, have been very positive. And the policy is, is coming to the point about the WPATH standard. So the expectation was that they would be out sooner. And my understanding is that they actually were released a little bit later than we anticipated. So they actually, the version eight of WPATH were, were completed in September, which was later than they anticipated. So that's when they were released. And certainly we've been working with that document to make sure that the policy is reflective of those new and updated WPATH standards.
I recognize the member for Halifax Citadel Sable Island.
Well, I thank you for looking into that. I do hope that, you know, a whole season has passed from December. So I'm hoping that, you know, that this is indeed a spring policy announcement. And people are waiting. I had a question sent, or my office received a question from a specialist who leads a team who work, who work in an arrhythmia clinic and specifically are focused on and specifically are focused on, uh, a sni, uh, specific genetic, um, predisposed condition, um, that, yeah, that affects folks in sort of the, I think mostly the northern zone. Um, and this clinic, uh, is supposed to be operating with eight, um, specialists. So that's served since 2007, when the problem was first sort of identified and assessed and responded to, the, 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 the sort of advice was to establish a clinic of, of eight physicians. And it's currently at six and has been at six for some time. Um, there is a, there's a specialist ready to come from the US. So like, ready to come. Just can't wait to get back to Nova Scotia, like, say the word. They've been working at the Mayo Clinic, like, you know, a well-respected physician. And the folks at this clinic were told that the DHWMD table won't review this proposal for a year. Um, at the same time, they are seeing growing demand, um, at their clinic. And so most of them have, for instance, a waitlist of 12 to 18 months. So just wondering, you know, can we not move forward with, with the specialist who's ready to come and fill a vacancy that exists? Um, and also make the work of all the other folks involved in this care much more effective? Um, and, you know, and why is it going to take a year for the table to review that case?
I recognize the honorable minister for health and wellness.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, I think I would need more details to understand the clinic, where it is. It, um, I think there's probably more details that we would need. Uh, and certainly the clinic is able to reach out to their, is it in northern zone, the clinic? Okay. So I think what we'll do is if we can follow up afterwards, I'm really not familiar with, uh, all the details. I have some, but not all. And I think there's probably more to understand about the, the clinic.